All right, we're three minutes late.
Good morning, everyone. Let's go ahead and get started. We'll call to order this the February 15th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. As always, we get started with an indication. I'm gonna put Mr. Slay on the spot in a minute and get started today.
Let's pray. Lord, as always, we open our meeting by invoking your power and your presence with us today and thank you, Lord, for the blessings that you have showered on our account. And, Lord, thank you for the leadership of this county. Thank you for the men and women who protect this county. Thank you for the opportunity of participating in our government. Lord, we open this meeting today invoking your spirit in this place so that we might make good and wise decisions. Christ, thank you, men.
Thank you, Mr. Slay. We're gonna start up with public comments. I have Mr. Will Kelly from 150 Ed Spahn Road, I believe, in my area. Come on up, Mr. Slay, Kelly.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
All right. I'm not on the agenda, but however, I do want to present an economical package for Rankin County on tourism.
Okay.
And I want to introduce bringing the welcoming, the freedom trail to Rankin County for tourism purposes.
All right.
And if you can work being on the agenda next month, I do a slight...
Talk to Ms. Janus right there and she'll get you worked in.
Okay.
When I call you, some of that information's gonna work out. But if you wanna talk about it a little bit or about anything today, you just need to get on the mic. So they can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the last three years, Walt Grayson has been helping me out to do a documentary on civil rights in Rankin County. We've come a long way. And however, Mississippi has prospered a whole lot off of civil rights right now. Rankin County needs to get its part. And I'd like for you guys to get with me and the communities and try to put these markers out because people from all over the world are waiting to hear our story. I know judging from the looks of you guys out there, you weren't around too... You were very young, like me. So I think we can talk about it this time. I really believe it's time to do that. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We appreciate it.
With more to it.
Put it back with another time. Anything else, Ms. Janus, on public comments?
That's all I have.
All right. Well, they're going under old business minutes for January 31st, February 4th. Motion, Mr. Morris, the second. Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Consent agenda. Consent agenda, gentlemen?
He might be able to prove. It seemed like it was... There was something on that thing. I just didn't want an answer about. Just curious. That was another problem with it. I'm just curious. It wasn't anything big. Don't worry about it. I can ask it later. There's nothing. I need no practice.
Any other questions on the consent?
All in favor, say aye.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second. Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Mr. Sullivan, come on up.
Just three items. Petition to change the assessment of 2018 Littlewood Personal Property Assessment Rule.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. B, please, sir.
Avoid 2018 tax sales for pin number 80920-1 for erroneous assessment.
Motion, Mr. Morris, and second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Sullivan.
Uh, print a renewal. Service.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Glad to have you with us today. Mr. Harrison, come on up.
Morning. I'd like to press approval of travel for myself for training and paving in Millen Machine on February 25th, 27th, and Tucson, Arizona. Any travel-related expenses, all covered. Costs paid by manufacturer.
First, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker, come on up.
I have no idea. That was your call. I wouldn't put it on the agenda.
I didn't. It was not.
I thought. It's your area.
All right, Mr. Parker, how about it?
Thank you, sir. I have one item on the agenda. The Holly Bush Road Improvement Project. I'm recommending approval of application number nine in an amount of $233,000, $24.82 to Southern Rock LLC and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Mr. Slay, I think we can do A through C together, can we not?
Yes, sir. A through C would be to set public hearings on February the 28th, as you see them there.
Motion to approve by myself, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. I think we can do D through L. Or maybe more.
Yes, sir. D through G would be a second motion to set public hearings for March 4th. You can see those hearings set there.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. I have Mr. Slay on to J. No, I'm sorry, H. I was wishing to get on past those public hearings, but...
Item H is a public hearing for the Lewis Mark Stackhouse Conditional Use Permit, 2244 Starr Road. This is District 3. Lewis Mark Stackhouse is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a second dwelling on his property at 2244 Starr Road. It's a three-acre parcel zoned A1. The home will be for his mother, who is moving from Arkansas. She is 87 years old and requires assistance. The new home will match the primary residence in materials and color. Conditional use permit was approved in 2017 from Mr. Stackhouse's in-laws to place a manufactured home on the property, and that manufactured home has been removed. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Lewis Mark Stackhouse Conditional Use Permit. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter at this time, but we'll close that public hearing and be appropriate to take action.
Did I hear you correctly saying the mother-in-law building would be of light construction and materials as the house?
The new home will match the primary residence in materials and color.
Good deal. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Slay. Next.
The next is a public hearing for Littlewoods LLC Conditional Use Permit Lots 3 and 4, Littlewoods, Phase 1. This is District 4 parcel. Littlewoods LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres on Lots 3 and 4 of Littlewoods, Phase 1. They are proposing a construction of a pond to lessen the drastic changes in elevation on these two lots. The excess dirt is suitable for structural fill, and they would like to sell the material for construction projects in the area. The proposed hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. The mining operation should be completed within 12 months. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Littlewoods LLC Conditional Use Permit Lots 3 and 4. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Unless we have any questions, it would be appropriate to close that public hearing. It would be appropriate to take action.
I make motion to close it, and I'm good.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Slay.
Item J is coming from the Animal Control Officer, Josh McCo. This is an action to revoke the wild animal variance that has been previously issued and authorize our animal control personnel to take possession of the animals subject to the variance issued to Willis J. and Mary Steenhouse. This was a pit bull located, and maybe more than one, at least one, located on their real property at 369 Coventry Court, Brandon, 39047. This has come to the attention of animal control that the dogs are not kept in the appropriate pen enclosure in accordance with our ordinance. Secondarily, there is no homeowner's insurance policy proof of coverage in place, which is also required by the ordinance. So at this time, it would be appropriate to consider action to authorize animal control to go and to take the animals.
Why do we have to vote on that? Why does it not automatically?
Because they had previously been issued, Jay, the variance by the board in accordance with our ordinance. In other words, they have permission to have the animals there. You have to revoke that permission when they come out of compliance.
Have we spoke to them? I thought when they come out of compliance, that was a...
I did, too.
Automatic revocation.
Well, this is a way for us to establish on the record the basis for taking possession of the animals. And you know how it is with a subject matter like that.
Have we spoke to them?
Josh?
Oh, I didn't see you standing by that.
Yeah. I'll let Josh speak on the issue.
Have we spoke to them or contacted them?
I spoke to them yesterday when I got this last call yesterday, when I made this aware to y'all. She acknowledges the dog was not inside the appropriate pen at the time. This is not the first instance that this has occurred. I printed out our call history. In seven months, we've had four different calls of this residence, four of these pit bulls, one of them being attacking, latching on to each other, and her individually getting bit during that time. The calls have come in. It's been chasing after kids. She just stated there was a hole in the wooden fence, and I asked her why it wasn't in the approved pen. And she stated that it was just going outside the used bathroom, which 30 minutes later, it only takes a split second to happen. I did write a report on it and put it in the file as well, if y'all wanna...
That's good of me. I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Slay.
All right.
Thanks, Josh.
This is a follow-up on action that the board has previously taken. Essentially, what we're having to do is retry. Nelson Road, this has been over about a year and a half ago, the board voted to abandon a segment of Nelson Road, formerly Public Road, that is only serving one resident. And this resident requested, made a request, filed a petition with the board to have this particular segment that serves his lone piece of property abandoned by the county. The board chose to do so at the time. We required the landowner to provide the actual legal description of the segments being abandoned, provided us an erroneous legal. So we're having to go back now and try this again. So what you're doing this time is you're publishing notice of the intent to abandon the appropriate segment of the road. We've had it checked out, and this time, the legal description is actually accurate. So we feel better about it this time. So all you're doing right now is publishing notice of the hearing to abandon the segment. We'll come back at the appropriate time, and you'll actually abandon that segment.
Motion approved. It's nothing that he did intentionally.
Oh, no.
It was just total. I forget what the deal was, but when he went somewhere to...
He went to his bank to do finance.
I didn't write the script.
They discovered it.
He said, "Really?" So, and we're just clearing, cleaning it up.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, I believe, second by Mr. Gaines. I have Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Slay.
Yes, so item L is a consideration of and potential action to adopt changes in Supervisor District 3 precincts and polling places. I've got a resolution here, and also, we have Ms. Tanya Rivers, who is the District 3 election commissioner here. If you guys have any questions, we've met with Ms. Rivers. Couple things. We've been notified by Precinct 309, which is FPC Brandon, that we're not going to be allowed to utilize the church facilities. They have expanded their childcare facility and operations, and they are now utilizing the space that was formerly used as our precinct location, our polling place location of 309. So they asked us to please find another location. 320 is West Brandon. That's our armory. It's been the precinct or the polling place for years and years and years. Under federal law, all of our polling place is now required to be capable of being heated and cooled, and the armory is not. It does not comply. And so therefore, those two precincts, East Brandon, West Brandon, we needed to find alternate locations. We come up with this idea. Ms. Rivers, Mr. Mara have done yeoman's work to try to figure out how we can accommodate that solution that we've come up with, and we're asking you to approve today for those two precincts is to combine those into one precinct. And we appreciate the fact that the city of Brandon is going to allow City Hall to be utilized as the polling place for both of those precincts. So there'll be one combined precinct at City Hall. Roughly 4,000 to 5,000 total voters. You would expect somewhere in the neighborhood, 75% to 80% turnout on a presidential election, probably. So in the neighborhood of 3,500, we believe that. And we're gonna get a really good test case in our statewide election in 2019. This is gonna really give us an opportunity to evaluate whether this maneuver will work. We feel like City Hall is adequate in terms of the size of the building, obviously, but also in terms of parking. And so with both of those in place, and I do appreciate the fact, and I think Tommy, you could just make sure this all went down like we had talked, we really do appreciate the city accommodating this, and they've already done some adjusting of their calendar in anticipation this would happen. I really appreciate that. They've moved some things around so that it would not conflict with the election schedule. So I really do appreciate that for the city doing that. So that would be one maneuver that we're doing here to combine 309 and 320 into one precinct. Hadn't been numbered, hasn't been named. We're working on all those details. You're just simply combining them today and establishing City Hall as a precinct as the polling place. The second change that you're being asked in District 3 is to combine precincts 306 and 307. 306 is Antioch, 307 is Maton. And so those are two very small precincts in terms of number of voters. Roughly 250 to 300 voters in both of those. 249 in Antioch, and I think it's 287 in Maton. Put those together, that would be called Antioch-Maton. It'll be reassigned a number, one of the other probably of those numbers, and the polling place will be Union Baptist Church, which is currently where the Maton voters vote. Okay? So combine those two precincts, voted Union Baptist, and what that will do is take four total precincts in Tanya's district down, reduced by two.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Slay. Thank you, Tanya. We appreciate it.
Last item is a discussion of Catherine Drive. So Bob, I don't know if you want to lead out on this.
Well, I didn't bring my little map with me, I thought. But we approved a subdivision at the end of Catherine Drive back in the fall. 13 lots, 1.25 acre seats, 3,000 square foot minimums. There's a stretch of road getting up to Catherine Drive, probably about 600 feet, maybe 700 feet long, that I've required the developer to improve to county specifications after they get through with construction. But there's a landowner out there that has opposition that think our right-of-way, that we have any right-of-way, because nothing was ever cleared. We demonstrated through some minutes in 1980 that the board took Catherine Drive when it took the development as a public drive. The tax assessor has been demonstrating that it's been 50 feet wide on the map since 1980, when the maps were initiated. So we're just kind of going through the motion to clarify that this is a public road, that we do have a 50-foot right-of-way. They are putting a new water line in with the MO right-of-way to help service the subdivision. So this is more of a housekeeping chore, just to go on record, to solidify so that the landowner out there, he has no... He understands that we are acknowledging it is a public road, although it's already been done so in 1980 through the minutes. Did I get it all?
Yes, sir. And you need to authorize your board attorney to communicate that in writing to any of the affected individuals or entities that may be involved. You've got a construction company that's under contract with the city of Brandon to provide the installation of the water line. They need something in their position to know that they are not off limits to install that water line as already approved. The property owner himself needs some official statement from us saying that is a public road, it's been maintained, and we claim that by prescriptive rights, if anything else, also by virtue of the plats that have already been established. So you're just simply authorizing me to communicate all of that in writing to the appropriate parties.
I make a motion to approve, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, Mr. Slay. Well, I guess that's you, huh? Hi, Ms. Oster, you're up.
Thank you. The first item I have is approval and authority for Wanda Martin, the comptroller, to be designated as a representative for the purpose of signing documents on behalf of the board.
Motion to approve, second by myself, second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Hey, let me ask you one. Have we got all that in the agreements?
No. We haven't done the other part. This came first, and we'll take care of the other.
I mean, I missed one. Not a shocker, but if I did...
The second item is authority to enter into an MOU with the Mississippi Administrative Office of Courts for the program to provide an attorney for injured parents whose parental rights are subject to termination with matching funds, $30,000. It's a budgeted item. They had this last year. Another $30,000 is in the budget this year that we will get, and it's just an annual resigning of this MOU, as long as we have this money available.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, Ms. Oster.
Next item is approval to renew our workers' compensation with Liberty Mutual through Wellington Associates, and this is for our volunteer fire and fire protection districts in the amount of $69,774, and authority to issue that check. And this is a reduction from last year.
So moved.
A reduction.
Yes.
Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Anything else in your section, Ms. Oster?
No, just under additional business.
Let's move on to additional business then. A, please, ma'am.
The first item is discussion and potential action to design the design and specification for the roof replacement at DHS. Our building over there is in need of a roof. We've looked at this for a few years now. The specifications that we have are not enough. We need a design because it is the entire roof that, you know, has slope and pitch and everything. And the purchase clerk nor anybody in this office has the ability to write the specifications for a roof. So we're going to need to employ an architect firm in order to do this, and I just need a direction of what y'all would like to do.
Is it asphalt shingle roof?
What kind of roof is it?
It's a flat, I believe.
Flat roof.
Okay.
Yes.
Probably rough rasp roof.
I think so.
It's the same type of material as on this one.
We need somebody better than me, I'll say.
Unless y'all got a better idea, I guess you reach out to Franco and then maybe they give us a little...
I thought I had not reached out to him yet. I wanted your direction, but I thought since he is already...
Before he does all the work, tell him to give us an estimate of what his...
Amen.
I mean, we don't want another $20-something thousand dollars.
I would just reach out to him to see if he is even interested at this time with the work that he has going on, if he would be willing to, and I will get an estimate from him before we proceed.
Okay.
Okay, so that's...
Do some of the roofing companies, do they have their own that would help design?
Well, our problem there is if it is a roof company that designs it, it's gonna be to their specifications, and then you can't get a second bid because it's not...
That's right.
So it has to be somebody independent.
So do you need any kind of motion here or anything?
I don't believe so today. Y'all have given me direction. We'll bring it back at our next meeting to see if they're willing to, and maybe we will have a price by then.
Own work to be, please, ma'am.
The next one is discussion of and potential action on access, control, and backup surveillance to be located at our new maintenance facility. Marcus is here and Mike to answer questions to tell you exactly. I guess Marcus would be the one...
Come on up, Marcus.
To tell you exactly what this is, and we have an estimated cost on this.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So at the current time, we've got some quotes back. We've got our first initial quotes back, and the total cost for battery backup, network cabling for the building, the network equipment for the building, surveillance and access control for the building is under $60,000. And that includes surveillance both outside and the limited inside, the inside coverage in the building. And there's approximately, I think there's five doors and plus the gate that will have access control for them, just like all...
What is the backup? What do we need a backup on surveillance?
No, no. UPS battery backup, like we deploy in all our other facilities. So battery backup for the access control system, the gate, the network equipment, computer equipment, things like that. And this was previously unbudgeted for this building, as I understand.
I just didn't... I mean, if the power's out, you know, will it not automatically open when the power's out?
That may not be what we want to do if somebody's breaking in.
Well, I mean, a UPS is only gonna last for a few minutes anyway, you know? The power's out, the power's out. It's not gonna last maybe an hour tops.
The UPS is there until, you know, to at least keep the network equipment up for a short, limited amount of time. And then if you have a generator in place, if there is a generator at some point, then it can be connected to the generator as well to, you know, to act that. But the UPS is a very limited portion of this cost.
Do we plan on doing the generator? Do we budget for a generator?
We're...
We've got generators.
Okay.
Generator's not coming.
This is not a budgeted item, and what I would like to do at this time is to not make a budget amendment. I've talked to Marcus. This is, it's $60,000, but it won't have to be bid because it's components bought from different companies and things. So some of them will require a second quote. But what I'd like to do now is to utilize some money that's in Marcus's budget, and I've already talked to him about this. And he's got some for some needs that he had, but if we use it later down in the year that he sees that he's gonna have to use what we had stored up for him, we'll do an amendment at that time.
Mike appreciates that. You know, you pay for his equipment.
How many cameras?
There are 10 total cameras in it.
What's the biggest cost of this? I mean, why? $60,000?
Sounds like a lot.
The biggest cost is the biggest cost is surveillance and access control. Access control tends to run in the neighborhood of between $2 and $3 grand of door. But the systems last basically forever. We've been running the systems that are in this building for, I think, 10 years or maybe more. But that stuff tends to last a long, long time. The surveillance system is probably the largest portion of that, and it's just because there are high-definition cameras outside to cover the expensive equipment that's sitting out there.
Did we have any of that in the other bit, old buildings?
No.
Now, any new facility, I'm trying to make sure it's covered on the front end because after the building's built, it's always more expensive to put it in.
Well, I could see like putting up a couple cameras, but I don't know if we need to, you know, have every corner of the inside of the building covered.
That's not the price of it, the cameras. You're talking just pennies, not pennies, but hundreds of the cameras. That's not where the money is.
Break it down. What are the cameras? What are you talking about? What's the cost?
So surveillance is probably in the neighborhood of about, I would say, $25 grand. You've got another... You've probably got another $20 grand on access control, and then the remainder is the UPS cabling and network, which is the smallest portion of this.
So those cameras are like $2,500 apiece?
Between the cameras, the conduit, to conduit cabling to get to them...
I have something else. You know, everything's going wireless. Is there a reason that we don't go wireless on those cameras, on security cameras?
Well, the cameras have to be powered, so you still gotta get something to...
You still gotta put a battery in them every six months, so...
Well...
They're hardwired.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Getting that actual camera that actually has good capabilities at high definition with a battery and a wireless signal, then I've gotta cover that area with wireless signal as well. So I've got an expense there. I end up spending the same amount to put a camera out there on the wire.
And we might try and these backs on me and Marcus has looked at that. We just haven't...
I've got wireless.
First laid out plans is what we're gonna have designed for.
Well, I get, you know, the access control and all that. I just didn't know if we need, you know, that much surveillance around there, since we've never had it before, you know, and we've never really had it issued, to my knowledge, of people coming in and taking our equipment.
Yeah, and one of the problems, I wouldn't say it's a problem out there, but this facility is way out there, and it's kind of in a remote area right now. So we did want to have some decent surveillance, especially on the gate, to where the gate is covered. So if somebody comes or goes, even before we get the gate up, we've got at least a track of their vehicle and hopefully a tag.
I think we gotta have security, because I have a shop, Jared has a shop. And if you've got a shop and you don't have cameras, you're not gonna notice that things are gone until you start going looking for them.
Till you need them.
Till you need them.
Okay, let me say, just in case you see somebody's warning. I got cameras in my shop, too, you know. Don't be coming around.
But I'm just talking about it. If I had a shop, I'd have cameras. If you have a shop where you have employees or whatever that work in there, I don't know how those two boxes get empty over a year or two, you know? But they do.
All right, I make most approval.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed, like, sign? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all. Next up on additional business, we have some friends from our Luckney Road area. Mr. Gaines?
Oh, Kyle, would you come up and...
Yeah, I thought she was gonna go with a public comment today.
I just took advice from Steve. Listen to him. So what the city of Brandon is proposing is this is a shorter-term, three- to five-year fix for Luckney Road. We all know that Luckney Road needs trees taken down. We all know that there are drainage and culvert issues that need to be taken care of, especially pertaining to residential driveways. But the city in the next year to two years will actually be having heavy equipment coming up and down Luckney Road and onto Kane Circle as we elevate our water tank over there another 40 feet. And so we're gonna have heavy equipment. But what the city is asking... But what the city is asking the Board of Supervisors for is $150,000, and to allow the city to combine a resurfacing, I think Mike, I think Mike and Charles have talked about an inch and a half overlay of Lucky Road from the Brandon city limits to the beginning point of the state right-of-way for 471, to where the city, a couple of the really bad culverts underneath Lucky Road, the city would take care of. The city would retake, would take care of the striping, and all the city's asking for is the Board of Supervisors give the city $150,000, where we can actually combine that project with, and try and increase AdCamp's mobilization ready, like participation to, because we're also trying to repave, or actually pave one of our parking lots at the amphitheater.
Thank you. I, I think that it should have been done, that's a state-aid road from stop sign to stop sign. And I didn't, well, I was kind of informed that it wasn't until we got to looking deeper and really looking at it. When that road was reworked a few years ago by the county under state aid, we went to the Flowood stop sign, and we stopped a mile and a half before we got to Brandon, which at the city limits, but we didn't stop at the Flowood, and it just didn't, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't here then, I can't answer why. It is in the city, and it's been in the city for a few years, but when we did that, Flowood was in the city, too, and we considered that end a state aid, which it was state aid all the way. Now, the city is saying, and this is probably about a $300,000 deal, what they're talking about doing, they're asking for 150. I talked to Mike, we can't do it for 150. And these people that are sitting here aren't the only ones that use that road. They live on it. Lucky Road has a lot of traffic, probably 3,000 or more cars a day, and it's getting pretty wicked in there. I ask that we participate. At 150,000, I think it's a deal for us, these people, and then it helps the city with more quantity of the asphalt that they're ordering for other things, too.
I just have one quick. Kyle, when are y'all planning on doing it? How soon?
As quickly as possible, because we would love to have that amphitheater parking lot paved in the first concert on March 29th.
Wow.
Good luck getting them activated that quick, man.
And that's why we've been trying to cobble together multiple projects to try and get and add, make it more appealing for AdCamp to mobilize quicker.
Okay, and one other thing I would like, if we could tie something in there, that the 150,000 that we put up, if the board goes, our 150,000 goes to Lucky Road. I want to make sure that we don't get in, run over somewhere else, and then we have to say, well, we ran our money before we got to y'all. Either start on Lucky or make sure that we earmarked 100...
The amphitheater operations fund will actually cover the cost of paving the parking lot at the amphitheater, and the city's general fund will pay the difference between supervisors' investments and payoff.
We can paper that up, I'm sure. Maybe, I don't know if it'll hold.
That's fine, and everything you're saying, Steve, but just, I think so they would understand, and then y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but it's state-aid, like a lot of others are state-aid, on the state-aid route, but it's, until it's brought up to a certain point, they really